All right, I call the, well, there we go. I call the regular session of the Hillsborough School District 1J to order. We'll begin as we always do with the flag salute. The flag is in the back of the room by the door there.
Flag is to get a flag from the United States of America. The United Republic will withstand one nation on your side, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
As we gather here today, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atfali indigenous people. Lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on. The Tualatin Kalapuya, Kathlamet, Clackamas, Tomwater, Malala, Bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. And remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native first peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over four hundred tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. Our next agenda item would be audience time. Do you have anybody who was requested to speak with us today? Would you not? Okay. I don't have to read this then. Cool. Uh. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded approved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Ward that the board of directors approve the agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection? Motion carries. Our first action item is to elect the board and vice chair, board chair and vice chair, and I have a thing to read. Um, this is also, I think, part in your packet maybe. Um. Nominations from floor. Nominations do not require, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for chair. Just as a reminder, we will hold separate elections for chair and vice chair, and nominations do not require a second. Nominations are in order as soon as the chair calls for them. Uh, so do I need to read all this? Um, yeah, okay. All right. What's that? It's for me. Okay. Um, so, uh. Oh, okay. And, okay. Uh, I will open the floor for nominations for the chair.
I nominate Mark Watson for the board chair position.
Uh, it does not require a second. Okay. Um, are there any other nominations for the chair position? My guess is me. Uh, sorry. Um. Uh, ta ta. For the nomination, I declare nominations closed. Um. Uh, now it's a, the motion is in the packet, I believe, right?
You're going to um, ask for a motion that the board of directors elect Mark Watson for the chair of the board of directors?
Uh, I move that the board of directors elect Mark Watson to the board chair position.
And that has to be seconded?
Yes.
I second.
Thanks. It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director McGuire that the board uh, elect me, Mark Watson, to the board chair position. Is there any further discussion? Patrick, go ahead.
Briefly, I want to say thank you for being willing. Uh, we had my first year on the board this past year. We had a pretty busy time selecting a wonderfully superintendent, and uh, you, I think, put in a lot of time and work and effort and uh, I acknowledge that and say I think we're fortunate that you're willing to continue on. So you always make sure all of us have a voice and get to say, and um, I think that's really a good thing in here, so thank you.
Thank you. So any further discussion?
I just also want to thank you, Mark, for your job this last year and with this transition that we are having new board members and a superintendent. I think it's really great to have um, a consistent chair um, this year to lead us through, so thank you.
Thank you. Rose, can you please call the role, please?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. The motion carries. Um, okay. Um. We would now open the nominations for vice chair. I guess I will uh, preface that by saying thank you for uh, choosing me as your chair again. I appreciate that, and I hope to be able to provide some smoothness during this time of transition for us. Um, I don't love I, you, you'll often hear me from the chair position mention how I, I think we need to be careful when we create new precedent. Um, I, I I don't hope, hope we don't make a precedent of three years. It's supposed, it's supposed to be a rotating position. Most Erica was two, Lisa was two people before. Two feels like the appropriate amount of time. So I'm a little uncomfortable doing a third year, so I want to ensure that um, whomever we choose for vice chair has an interest in being the chair going forward after the next year and um, I'm a big believer in the theory of always be training your replacement. Uh, so um, I, I would hope that whomever we choose for vice chair um would be able to move into the role at the completion of this year. Let's hit the door. Door's open now, right?
Hmm.
Okay. Um. What I would say is that it's just, uh, the the biggest thing is time. It's the, the, and Erica, feel free to jump in, like, what, what does it take to be chair and vice chair? Um, it's being able to, to find the time. Um. All of us have very busy personal lives and finding the time to to ensure that the district business is done appropriately, can be trolling sometimes, but you know, finding that time to do it is kind of important, so um. And, and I really do see it this as a hopefully a transitionary role, so um. Does somebody have any questions about being the vice chair and whatever? That? Anybody have any interest in doing it? Like, you, uh, so point of order or clarity, Rose. Uh, Yvette voted on the last one, but she hasn't been sworn in yet.
She's a voting member as of July first.
Because of July first, right. Like, the public has already done that. Yeah.
She's a voting member July first.
That's kind of what I thought. Okay. Just making sure there was no, right, yeah.
I apologize for doing this in public, but I had a chance to talk to you in advance and ask if you'd be interested in continuing to serve.
Hmm, and I'm doing it for sure.
I actually haven't had a chance to talk to Nancy. Uh, do you, has she talked to you?
Uh, we haven't had a lot of, yes, I, yeah, we, we haven't had a lot of conversations about it. Um, I guess I don't know. I don't have crystal clarity around her intent. Um. So. Um, we've talked about well, conversations I've had with her should probably just remain private, but yeah, like um. Like, I guess I don't know that she, she thinks she has the time, or I think she does think so. I don't, yeah, I don't.
I have any, I don't have any comments, but I am prepared to make a nomination.
Oh, okay. Uh. Nom, nominations, are there any nominations for the vice chair?
I nominate nominate Yvette Pantoja for vice chair.
Would you accept the nomination, Yvette?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um. All right. Uh, are there any other nominations for vice chair?
I, I appreciate uh, all that Nancy's done the past year, so it's without having her here to confirm that she's interested, I feel like not so comfortable nominating her.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a little uncomfortable with the situation we're in too, but um. Uh, I'm just gonna try to move forward, I think. Yeah. I am uncomfortable with I, I, I too fear discomfort. Let me just put it that way. Um. Is there any further discussion?
I just appreciate Yvette being willing to be as a new board member to fill the role. I know you have a lot of experience and education and throughout this campaign, I really aim to appreciate your, your work ethic and your enthusiasm, and so I know Mark will did a great job bringing you on board, and I really appreciate you being there.
Thank you.
I, I also appreciate you being one to step up. It's a, it'll be a great learning opportunity for you. Erica, look like you want to add something.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know Yvette is new to the board, but um, having you be on your third year as chair, I think it'll be a great um, pairing so that you can mentor and provide some guidance on how uh, board chair work is done and what it takes and uh, it's an easy kind of way of looking at the time commitment and the the, what the role takes, and I think it's a great opportunity to have someone with tenure and someone new paired up together. Thank you.
I move that the board of directors elect Pantoja to the board vice chair position.
Second.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Director Lopez that Yvette Pantoja be elected to the board vice chair position. Is there any further discussion?
I just also want to acknowledge um, um. Uh, Director Thomas, who's not here right now, and um, all the work that she put in this last year. I know uh, a lot of people don't know, but being board and vice chair consumes a lot of time, and it is um a debt of gratitude that the rest of the board has for you for organizing our meetings, our agendas, and just actually answering a lot of emergency um, that we, with the superintendent um, that keeps the board in the know and also keeps us um, well functioning, so thank you.
I, I too would like to express my gratitude to Director Thomas for the extra time she spent on board work this year. Um, I'm glad that we'll get to continue to serve with her for another two years. Uh, Rose, can you call the role, please?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right.
Mark, if you'd like, we can, oh, have her move down.
Oh, yeah.
Let's start with the next one.
She doesn't sit over here. Wow, okay. Wow, there you go. Yeah, then you have to just start, you have to run the meeting, run the rest of the meeting in case, you know, something happens. Um. And that, that, this is like new just in our tenure. The board chair used to sit in the middle and have to look both directions to figure out if anybody wanted to speak, and Erica, was it your idea? Who, somebody, somebody thought it's better to be down here at the end where you could see everybody. Next, it was like, so it's a good move, moving us over here. I think that, that worked out pretty well. Um. Okay. Uh, our next action item is regarding boundary adjustment cleanup, and I think Sayida has a additional color to add to this?
Yes, thank you. So essentially, what you have in your board packet is um, it's a recommendation for approval to make a minor boundary adjustment between Rosedale and Groner attendance area. So essentially, when we uh, were planning uh, Tamrac Elementary School, we made some adjustments to boundaries, which Hazel, Groner, and uh, Rosedale were impacted. Now, after a second glance and looking at, you know, potential bus routes in the future, this is not impacting anyone currently, but we're thinking about the future because we have some undeveloped land. We know that will be developed, we'll have housing there, so it's cleaner if we were to do it now, uh, to create a, a boundary line on Rosedale Road, thus separating the attendance boundary area for Rosedale to the north and Groner to the south. And so that's essentially um, the, the recommendation is approving that minor adjustment, which is not going to impact anyone at the moment. In your board packet, we talk about a couple of families which have already elected to go to other schools prior to this uh, this noticing, so it's not going to impact anyone now or in the future.
Is there any other questions for Sayida? I know we had, well, your question's answered in email or whatever?
Yes.
Cool, all right. Um. All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the board of directors approve the slight change to Rosedale and Groner's attendance boundaries.
Second.
It's been moved by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Ward that the board of directors approved the slight change to Rosedale and Groner's attendance boundaries. Is there any further discussion?
And I just want to appreciate the direct contact that you and your office, um, Sayida had uh, with the families to ensure that the impact was mitigated, or there was going to be a resolution if there was some impact to the families, so thank you for that.
And thanks for the thorough responses to Director Ward's questions, so, thanks. Uh, Rose, can you call the role, please?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh. So, you put a placeholder there. Um. We'll, we'll just come back to it. Right, okay. We are going to move to our next agenda item and come back to that, since we know we have a thing that we're gonna have to do. Um. The next item we will address is the appointment of student representatives to the board. It's kind of fun. Um. I think we just, oh, make it, would somebody like to make a motion? It's in your packet, it's pretty long.
All right, I'm gonna try, but if my um, pronunciation is off, I apologize. I move that the board of directors that accept the recommendation of the interview committee and appoint RJ Panlello from Glencoe High School, Hadley Brathapan from Hillsborough High School, and Aliana Shalikar from Oak Street Campus to serve as student representatives to the board and directors during the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second. Did I say it? All right. It's moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director McGuire that the board of directors accept the recommendation of the interview committee and appoint RJ Panlello from Glencoe High School, Hadley Brathop, Brathapan, Brathapan? Correct? No, I, ah, from Hillsborough High School and Aliana Shalikar from Oak Street Campus to serve as student representatives to the board directors during the twenty twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to say it's a real pleasure meeting you and thank you for being willing to serve. Um. I can also note that um, one of the items I sent to Mark and suggested if we had enough time on our August meeting, which I know is very busy, so we may not, but if we do, I asked, we could discuss briefly some additional ways that we can find more tools to continue to empower our students to represent their uh, schools, whether that's by some structured time for uh, feedback from students, but I really think that we get a lot of value out of you sharing what your schools are thinking, what students in the schools are thinking. As a board, I want us to brainstorm additional ways to keep giving you tools to do that, so thank you.
Um, I also just wanted to say it was so great to interview both of you, and um, this year, actually, we had so many candidates for school board um, for student reps, so it was really, really hard to come to the decision. Um, but I know that uh, during the interview panel, all of us three that were part of the committee were really blown away by your presence and um, your answers, and really feel like you're the best candidate to represent your student body in your school district and bring your thoughts and opinions to the board, so we're very excited to have you do.
Yeah, uh, and I, I too, it was great to meet all of our candidates. So many uh, wonderful students wanted to join us and um, we're really excited to have you all on board with us this year, so looking forward to serving with you for a year. And uh, now we will go over there to do the oath of office.
Do we technically need to vote on the point? Oh, sorry, you need to vote on it first. Okay.
Didn't we do? We did. Okay, sorry, Rose, can you call the role?
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Students are appointed. Now we'll do the other one. All right.
Sure. Aliana, if you could unmute yourself, you'll be first.
Okay, am I good to go?
Hello, how are you? Nice to see you again.
Yeah, I'm good. How are you?
Great, even virtually. All right, can you raise your right hand, please? I, Aliana Shalikar.
I, Aliana Shalikar.
Will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
Will support the constitution, the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties of student representative.
And will start the duties of student representative.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you so much for agreeing to join us. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Who's like, go first, or person here? Show it. Now, come on over here. Raise your hand. How do you pronounce your last name? I, Hadley Brathapan.
Aye.
Will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
Will support the constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties of student representative.
And will discharge its duties of student representative.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome aboard. Thanks so much for serving with us. Okay, come on up. Raise your right hand. I, RJ Penlello.
Aye.
Penlello, okay. Will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And will discharge the duties of student representative.
And will discharge the duties of student representative.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for joining us. Welcome aboard. I'm gonna do it again. Uh, next up, we will do oath of office for our returning, continuing school board over here. Raise your right hand, please. I, Patrick McGuire.
I, Patrick McGuire.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of Oregon.
Constitution of the state of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Thank you so much for joining us again, Patrick. Thank you for continuing. Yvette, would you like to take the oath of office? Right. Raise your right hand. I, Yvette Pantoja.
I, Yvette Pantoja.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemn, sorry, I will support.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of Oregon.
The constitution of the state of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
And the policies of Hillsborough School District 1J.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
To the best of my ability. Thank you so much. Welcome aboard. Thanks for serving with us. I believe is the main business hour of our meeting. Um. Our next item would be the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the board of directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Lopez that the board of directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would like to move to amend uh, the agenda and remove policy IGBD, IGBHD, and JFCF.
All right.
I can withdraw my motion and.
Uh, I think what we've normally done is make a motion and then amend it, so. Um, yes, Director McGuire would like to amend your motion?
Oh, well, Director Ward made a motion to amend. I can.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's perfect then. All right. Is that how we do it, Rose? It's been wrong. Uh, I think that, I think, I think that's fine. Um. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Uh, is there any objection to passing the amended motion removing policies IGBHD and policy JFCF? Consent agenda passes. We'll now return to our action items. Um. Uh, it is there any discussion regarding these two policies?
I.
Can we take this scroll through to?
Right.
I was just gonna ask a clarifying question, because we have item in sorry. You're in item one, is that correct?
We, we've gone back to the action items. Uh, we added uh, approval of specific qualities to the action section uh, because we sort of, we, uh, Director Ward was kind enough to give us a heads up that she wanted to remove these from
Okay.
from the discussion. So we're, we're back to the action items. I guess the, this is a semi-unprecedented July meeting. We talking to folks here, we can't really think of a time when we've actually had a scheduled July board meeting, so at, at least a decade or so since that's happened. We had a bunch of special ones in COVID, but, so, um. One thing to consider is have we all had a chance to review these in completion because it's a impromptu meeting, and do we want to just move forward with approving the policies? Or do we want to table these policies? So we can either have a take temperature of the board. We can either move forward with these policies um, individually and discuss them, or we can table this discussion to another time. Well, we have policy discussions in August or would it be September? I don't know how, I guess I don't know how full the retreat agenda is yet.
We could do.
Yeah, we'll have to say today, so, okay.
I guess, could we ask our, is there anything in these policies that would, would be a problem if we waited a couple months?
Uh, they are waiting to approve the local wellness policy. That is waiting for an approval, um, and is very time sensitive.
Which one?
That, that one was, that was included in the consent agenda. That wasn't one I pulled or requested. Yeah.
So is it, do, do we have a sense of urgency on the two that, um, IGBHD or JFCF? That it feel more like when schools in session kind of things? Being like closer. Nobody, nobody.
If we can take care of them in August or September, we'll be fine.
So, uh, yeah, right.
Uh, yeah, I, because uh, this is a shorter meeting, I've been busy. I, I gave the, uh, consent agenda a little bit briefer review than I normally would, so since I know that the director had questions about it, I might be happy to wait a month and read it over in more detail.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that, the, the point of a consent agenda is to just easily move items that don't require further discussion, so if we have things that require further discussion, I'm happy to either have this discussion today or another time. Uh. Eric, any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't see anything on there that I feel like I need further conversation about, so um. I'm, I'm fine passing, but if there's questions that still need to be answered, are we waiting on questions to be answered for this?
I, I don't know. Uh, it was Director Ward's idea to maybe table them to another day, so I'm happy to.
Right, yeah. I, I do have a couple more questions, and um, I guess I wasn't, I was thinking this was going to be on the August agenda and not on the July agenda.
Okay.
I did get questions out, and I do appreciate the cabinet for I did get questions out and I do appreciate the cabinet for um being responsive to that and the superintendent as well. Um, so I do, I do still have some po, some questions concerning um policy JFCF. Uh, that I'd like to address. My issues with um. The IGBHD, which is the program exemptions. Is that, I, I had some questions and they were answered. And again, I have additional questions for this, but it seems to be broadening policy and. Um, it also seems to um. I ju, I just would like to see some clarity in this with regards to the, the parents and especially with CSC, because it seems to me that this policy is broadening that opt out instead of. Um. Or rather, yeah, broadening this than um, than what the ORS has in there. For instance, it's asking that. A request be made, whereas the ORS says that the parent can. Direct that opt out. So, I'm, there's, there's a few things I'd like to discuss about that.
So the, right, so it. It may just be that your questions aren't fully answered yet and they could be fine in the consent agenda next time. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm, I'm sort of. Yeah, I think the email threads I've seen, it looks like the con, the conversation was ongoing and hadn't completed yet. So. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, so. We don't necessarily have to take action on these dates. So we'll, we'll table these to either August or September. If everybody's kind of okay with that.
Alright, yeah, we'll find a spot in those agendas. Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and uh, thank you Director Ward for taking your concerns to them, to the people responsible for them directly. And if. Offline, all of your concerns can be addressed, then awesome. Then we just move on, right? Okay. Um. Consent agenda include the meeting dates. Alright, so we're done. So, we're done, right? Okay, um, this is your first board meeting, but one of the. One of the privileges of being a member of the school board is you're afforded time at the end of every board meeting to literally say whatever you want to say. So, you might have anything prepared, you may have anything you want to say, but uh, every board member and the superintendent will have time to sort of. Say whatever they would like to say. Uh, so we'll start. Online if Aliana is still with us. Aliana, is there anything additional you'd like to share tonight? And don't feel pressured to do so. We'll have an orientation session where all of this will become clear later.
Um, I have nothing, but I'm really excited for this year. Thank you so much again for accepting this position.
Thank you. Hadley, anything you'd like to share with us additionally tonight? RJ? Alright. Next up is superintendent's time. The first superintendent's time for superintendent Ryan.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to congratulate uh Yvette, Patrick and Sheen on their elections and re-elections to the school board. Congratulations to you. Um, welcome to Hadley, RJ and Aliana. Thank you for committing your time to support the board from a student perspective. Congratulations to Mark for uh being reappointed as the chair and to Yvette as vice chair. Thank you to um Director Thomas for her service as the vice chair for the last year. Um. Congratulations to Mary Kay Babcock and Bethany um Schachner, our new uh union representatives who will be here in future board meetings. We've been elected to their roles and welcome to Sayida and Brooke to our cabinet team in your first board meeting. Glad you're with us. Um, also thank you to families for coming to support students today. I think we got the biggest crowd ever in July to support our students. So, um, thank you for being here today. Um, looking forward to the retreat on August eighth. I'll see you then.
Thank you. Erica, is there anything else you want to add tonight?
Um, just again, welcome to our student reps and congratulations to um Patrick and Sheen for the reelection. And welcome, Yvette. Um, we're so happy that you also decided, took on the role of vice chair for us this year and. Um, we are excited for our August retreat. I know you'll have fun planning that with Mark.
I write it in the deeper. Director Ward, what do you consider like that today?
Yes, uh, I also want to welcome our student reps. Glad that you are here and looking forward to working with you over the course of the next year. Um, and again, congratulations, Yvette. It was nice meeting you and, and visiting with you and Patrick and Sheen as well. I also want to say thank you again to cabinet because there were a lot of emails flying in a very short period of time. So I do appreciate that. Um, Michelle, I want to thank you again for the time that we had for budget discussion. That was excellent and awesome. Thank you so much. And wish everyone, oh, and Travis, welcome and great first meeting. And I want to say um. Hope everyone has a safe and happy rest of your summer and we'll see you at the board retreat.
Patrick, anything to add tonight?
Yeah, I would just, on the occasion of vice swearing in today, like to. Express my great appreciation uh to my mother Cheryl Sisum, who is watching from her home in Tooleton. And um. I just, I was raised by a single mother who um. The love and support she gave me through the years, I feel like everything I was able to do as an adult is because of that. So I, every time I have a. A honor of sorts, I like to, to thank her. Um. And all my other family members, my grandmother Julie McGuire, um, and. So many friends. And, and I would also thank. Uh, all of you colleagues. I feel like I've learned a lot from all of you, uh, from. Your questions. And I was telling you that Director, earlier that I feel like after a year of. Of learning and listening, I've started to. Understand a bit of the wonderful work we do here at the district. And so, I'm looking forward to volunteering the next four years with all of you. Thank you for being willing, willing to help me and um. I'll do my best to fulfill the community's trust.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add tonight?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm ecstatic to be here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm ecstatic to be here and, you know. Get to build relationships with all of you and get to learn. And I'm really excited about this new role and also being vice chair. It's. A lot of new for me, but you know, I'm excited and I give a hundred percent to anything that I do and I have the energy and time for this. And so, I'm ready to learn. But thank you.
Thank you. Uh, again, add my congratulations. Welcome. Neither of you are unfamiliar with the boardroom, so. Pretty easy transition, I expect. Travis, welcome again, again, again. First meeting. Uh, Patrick, Sheen and Yvette, congratulations on your election. I look forward to serving you with, with you for another, for, for, for two more years at least for me. Um, and I hope you enjoy your time on the board and thank you for um. Stepping up into a unexpected role and we will make the best of it and uh have a great time. Um, thank you all so much for joining us tonight. Our meeting is adjourned.